Trustee Major, can you hear better now?
Yes, with my headphones, I can. Let me see if, but then it, then the microphone doesn't want to work. So let's see.
I can hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you. No. Okay, um, well.
Debbie, can you hear us?
Not without my headphones on, but I'm gonna, can.
Okay.
Can you hear me right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure.
Does look like it's kind of precarious.
Okay, I'll ask one more time. Okay, if you guys start talking, we'll see if she can hear us better.
Okay, Debbie, hear us now?
I can hear you. Not great, but I can hear you. Yes.
Okay.
And this person says the sound is great.
Okay, and it's on my end. I'll make it work.
Okay, we can hear her very well. Yeah, we can hear you. You're very clear. So Chrissy, are we, are we re-recording yet?
Yep, we're all recording and all, all good.
So I did forget to welcome visitors. Thank you all for coming. Now, I do need a motion to approve tonight's agenda for the curriculum workshop.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda for the curriculum workshop.
I'll second that. Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Is there any patron input at this time? Then we'll move right into the curriculum presentation.
Hey, good evening. We will try to protect our voices from here, everything that we say. Just want to say thank you for those who are online, including us and then our visitors. Dr. Pasley and they are happy to get to talk to you about curriculum, something that we are passionate about. This is what makes us happy. So that's our details. So for those of you that are online, we have our email so people can access us if they need to. So Dr. Pasley is the principal at Bay Keefe Elementary, and then I work here at the district office as the assistant superintendent, and we work closely together on all things curriculum. So just wanted to start here and talk a little bit about guaranteed and viable curriculum. And Board Chair Thompson sometimes uses the term foundational curriculum, and I think we're talking the same thing when we use this term in your term. But when we really think about what we want to make sure our teachers have in their hands in their classrooms, the standards are adopted by the State Board of Education, and we are legally required to teach to those standards. That's the minimum requirement. We can do more than that, but we cannot do less. The big one in the middle is where all the local control happens. So our textbooks, our software programs, our supplemental resources, those all go through the board and are board approved. And then the instructional pacing calendars, that's, that's the, the practitioners work together on those to make sure there's some agreement so that we have consistency across the district with regard to when we're teaching what standards by grade level. So we are pretty intentional about not creating opportunities for us to create whole spurt students who might move from one school to another within our district.
And this is where we're really looking at uniformity, really still taking the students into consideration and differentiating, being able to provide some individualized support, but we still have a uniformity as far as the trajectory of where we're supposed to get in that trajectory.
Okay, so we just wanted to give just a little bit of a historical perspective because we do have new board members. And so I'm just gonna go through this fairly quickly, but in 1991, when I was hired as a first grade teacher in the district, we didn't have, we might have had internet, but we didn't, certainly didn't have it in our classrooms, and I didn't have access, access to it as a teacher. And our standards, if there were any, there was no online place to look for them. When I was hired, I was told, as first grade teacher, your job is to make sure at the end of the year that your kids can read and write and that they can add and subtract. I had textbooks in my classroom and I had manipulatives and resources that I could use, but I also had a lot of autonomy to create lessons that fit with my teaching style and my kids' learning style. So it was a nice kind of balance. One of the things that this district has done for a lot of years is follow the state adoption cycle. And so prior to the year that Dr. Meyer came, we bought a new textbook every year. And it was, the state has a six-year adoption cycle. And so we, every six years, we're adopting a new ELA textbook. And every six years, we're adopting a new math textbooks, but every year we were adopting something new. But that's a $500,000 to $600,000 cost to the district to do that every year. And when Dr. Meyer came, we had a negative $12,667 roughly fund balance. And in order to try to make us healthy financially, we pushed the pause button on the following the state adoption cycle, which actually the state isn't even doing anymore. So that, that cycle is not there for us anymore like it was before. In about 2000, No Child Left Behind became a thing. And there were some buzzwords that, that we kind of lived by. The first one was fidelity to program. And so during that time, all of our teachers were told that you had to be on the same page, on the same day, across the district. And so the teachers who were hired during that time really learned that fidelity to program. And what we ended up doing during that time was a lot of teaching the textbook instead of teaching children because they didn't have the latitude to stop and assess whether their kids were learning what they needed to learn. And they definitely didn't feel like they had the latitude to push the pause button and slow down so that they could make sure they were meeting the needs of the kids.
So from our high end to our low end, if you were struggling, it wasn't tailored to me. It was just really tailored to the middle. And if you got it, great. If you didn't, we just keep going. This is also when high stakes testing came out. And so really districts coming along, looking at what standards are we teaching? And then does that match the test that we have at the end because then that was gonna be published, those results.
And then just recently, No Child Left Behind was reauthorized in this Now Every Student Succeeds Act. And there really has been a shift at the federal level and that state level where in focus from what the teacher is doing to what the students are doing. So the shift is really not on the teaching, but on the learning. And how are we addressing student learning? And how are we, how do we know for sure that they've learned what they need to learn? But so that's kind of where we've been. We did, as I said before, we did follow that state adopted adoption cycle, but we have not for the last few years. And we are gonna talk about math a little bit later, but that's caused a little bit of concern for some of our teachers. So we'll discuss that as this thing goes off.
But this shift has really allowed us to take into consideration where the usual students are, where clusters of children are, so that we're addressing these questions around what are guaranteed and viable? So what is it that we want all students to do? So at the end of the year, what are we promising parents, what are we promising those kids? That every single third grader is getting the same standards taught with two fidelity and we're expecting mastery? And then so what, how are we gonna know if they get it? So that's where the assessment piece is in. So being able to, you know, if you're depending on where your differentiation is and where you fall, having different tests so that we can access that. So if you're a high-end student, are we pushing you? You have the same right to grow as another student. If you're a struggling learner, we're not putting a test in front of you that you can't read so that we're looking at different outcomes and really tailoring instruction and assessments to our kids. And then, okay, so we have these kids that we've given them a formative assessment. They have it. They know it. We don't need to spend six weeks on it where maybe another group does because they have it. So then how can we extend and go deeper within those same scope of standards? And then what we, what do we do if they learned it? So these are kind of our four questions that guide all of our conversations when we're looking at guaranteed and viable, and then just making sure that we're ensuring all kids get the same standards, possibly differentiated based on their skill set, but we're allowing them, we're not pigeonholing kids. We're really giving them that opportunity so every kid has an opportunity to master those standards. It also allows us to really make sure that we're helping kids when they're going in front of that test that they're prepared for it, that they're not, that we haven't not, you know, we haven't taught them standards that they're going to be asked to teach or being asked to undo. And, you know, they're frustrated because they've never seen any of that concept. So this is our way of ensuring that when, at the end of the year, when we give them that test, that we have done our part.
This is the, when we think about the district's mission statement, this is really the meat and potatoes. If we're going to ensure every child's learning every day socially, emotionally, and demically behaviorally, this has to be our intentional focus. And under No Child Left Behind, this was really challenging for us because of that mandate for fidelity to program. But under every, every Student Succeeds Act, we have that flexibility to really be mindful of the need for differentiation.
And now we're always just trying to maximize closing that gap or extending that, depending on where you are. So our Teaching and Learning Handbook, we have our kind of organizational tool that we started with. Some of our pacing guides originally were on the district website. At one point, we went to Google Drive and so everything, like if you were a fourth grade teacher, everything could be accessed through Google Drive. The problem with doing it that way is different folders. People would move the folders, you know, even how Drive is. And so it was hard to find things. And so we just, I think it was two years ago, or at the end of, I think two years ago, or at the end of last year, we really just started looking at, okay, how do we make this accessible for all teachers? And we can close some of that down so they can put it in their favorites. They have access to it. It's not gonna be changed. If you go into that folder at some point, find items, how to move out of it. So we created the Teaching and Learning Handbook. This was built by myself, Lisa, and then several teachers that were participating in the curriculum. Pacing guide work during that school year. And so we put our why and our intentions and then just really tried to make this house all things curriculum. So if you were a brand new teacher, if you were a veteran teacher, if there was anything that you needed to see or that you needed, you had access to it on one doc that you were having to search through a multitude of folders. So that's how we kind of made this. And then I have changed the formatting to make it look prettier over the course of the last year, which is not a strength of mine, so I'm really proud of myself. I'm more the meat and potatoes girl, not the pretty, so.
So we don't, we don't want to inundate you with a lot of documents and things to look at, but we do want to highlight some of these because we've just heard some questions or concerns maybe about, probably the one that I want to make sure we talk about is, do we have a system for making sure that all first graders, for example, because I'm pulling them up, are learning the same things at the same time? So the first grade, district-wide first grade team, they, this is their document. They, they worked on this collaboratively. So this is the math pacing guide. So at the top, they have their things that they do every day during calendar time. Every one of our first grade teachers does calendar time. Anything you see in red is assessed on the report cards, and they're very crystal clear. And these are just all repetitive, rote kinds of skills that the kids just need to know. They need to be able to count to 120, and they need to be able to identify numbers. And so this is by quarter. So in the first quarter, they all agree that these are the things they're doing every day in calendar to get to mastering. So you can see those things. And then we get down here. So the first grade fluency standard, the end of the year, kids, first graders need to be add and subtract through 10 with fluency. And that does not mean the algorithm. It just means that they have multiple strategies to quickly and efficiently get to the answer to a multiple or an addition or subtraction. The algorithm is a mastery standard in fourth grade. So we spend a lot of time in kindergarten, first, second, and third grade, really setting the foundation for number sense so that kids understand why numbers do what they do. So as they go into the upper grades, they, they're not struggling with how to, how to compose and decompose numbers. It comes very naturally to them and there, it's just, that makes the algorithm a lot more user-friendly. There's a huge focus on place value so that when they're adding 112 to 213, they recognize in the tens column that they're not adding 1 plus 1, they're actually adding 10 plus 10.
And the push is efficiency and accuracy, so they're not having to finger count. Or as you get into those bigger numbers, they're not using an inefficient method that's going to get them lost in transition of trying to solve a physical type of problem. So that's why fluency is so important.
So that's at the top of each grade levels, whatever their fluency standard is. So you can see in that, so in the first four weeks, we do No Simple September in our kindergarten, first, second grade classrooms. So they don't focus on math symbols or even really digits. They do a lot of place value games and just really establishing that strong number sense. And we've actually seen at the end of the year, our kids are hitting grade level benchmarks much earlier with higher scores because of the amount, that month that they're putting into really working on fluency, or sorry, number sense. So you can see on here, No Simple September, this is what they're focusing on. Here are some resources. This is our district adopted, current district adopted math program, Go Math. There are some other resources there. These are assessments that the first grade teachers have agreed to. And then these are some online resources that they use for some additional practice with this, the standards. So as you can see, as we scroll down here, these are all in a particular order because they've agreed that this is the order in which they're going to be taught. So for the first four weeks of first grade, this is what they're doing, No Summer, No Simple September.
And I will just, oh, go ahead.
When you say they've agreed, is this, every teacher we have has agreed to all of this?
In the first grade. This is the first grade.
Right, yes.
And I, I think it's important to note, we have a lot of these formative assessments. By no means are we asking teachers to give every single one of these assessments. The idea is that if you give it a formative number one and the students aren't able to do it at that moment because maybe there, this is an exposure opportunity, we're not expecting mastery, then we have a few other assessments they can give just to determine if mastery is at that point. So they're not giving the exact same test, not that first graders are necessarily memorizing it, but we're giving teachers options. So this is not a laundry, they're giving all of these, it's, it's examples and so that they have additional tools.
And there's some agreement also through this on the type of, the level of rigor that they're expecting from kids. Because when you're assessing number sense, you can do it in lots of different ways, but there are ways that are much easier for kids and then there are ways that are more challenging. And so they've agreed to, what is that level of rigor that we're saying we're, we're looking for?
And I would say many of the standards in implementation are kind of at that abstract level. And so when we first maybe expose, or maybe the first four or five times, we're doing it at a concrete level. So they're just getting down to it and understanding it. And then maybe we're adding it to a story problem, or maybe we're adding an additional piece on it too that makes it a little bit more rigorous, but that's what the standard and application looks like. So again, this is a progression of some of that would be idea that those first couple of exposures, we recognize it wouldn't be developmentally appropriate for kids to get it. But maybe the second or third time, we have another test with a little bit more added rigor and a little bit more added rigor. So we're not just throwing it out then, you know, something that they haven't been exposed to, but we're building up to that standard's actual implementation, look at it and beyond conceptually.
I mean, at the end of the year. So then in the next three to four weeks, so starting in October, they're gonna focus on informal linear measurement through iteration, which basically means they're going to use paper clips to measure something and count how many paper clips long is this thing? Or they're gonna use unit fixed cubes, but it's non-standard just to help them learn the concept of using something that's uniform in size to measure other things. So you can then compare it, which is the pencil longer or is the notebook longer? And they can use their unit fixed cubes. So it's, the, the thing about the current Idaho math standards that are really, is really strong is that it focuses on, on, at every grade level, when we're introducing a new concept, they start at the concrete level where kids are manipulating things and moving things around before they go to what we call representation, where they start to put some numbers together. And then the final one is that abstract, which is the algorithm. And it's, the algorithm is the most abstract because it's just the memorization of the procedure. The concrete and the representation allow the kids to understand why the algorithm works. So this is, so in the first quarter, so you can see that they, they definitely have their school year kind of planned out as far as what they believe is most important and what skills come first and how do we build on those to get to the end of the year when we're looking at, what are we promising? As Dr. Pasley said, at the, with our standards, what are we promising parents? That at the end of this year, your child's going to master this? And if they are showing that they're not mastering it, we continue to intervene all year long to get them to the point where we're at mastery. Sometimes for some kids, we have to continue that even into the next school year, but we don't ever stop. It continues to be a focus for us.
There's lots of different names you'll see, verb which it calls them essential standards or called power standards. I mean, for us, it's really about these are crucial to developmentally, like them being successfully able to, you know, do high school algebra to do all, so it's something that we just carry on. If they don't have it, we're gonna continue to reteach and make sure. So with the idea that eventually that exposure will be enough at some level of mastery.
So this is a high school, and you can see this is gonna look very different. But here's a high school economics curriculum calendar. So in quarter one, they're gonna introduce, this is, these are weeks. So the second and third week, they're doing economic systems. These are the concepts that they're, so they, across the district, can be kind of on the same page. We started with the elementary teams, and so their instructional calendars obviously are much more dialed in with regards to the number of resources that are in there and how they look. So Dr. Pasley and I are going to continue to work with our teams to get to kind of a uniformity with regard to how those instructional calendars look. They're similar, but we definitely want to, we've been talking about playing around with a template that would fit what our teachers have put together, just so it looks the same. So if a board member or a patron wanted to take a look at some of these, they would, they would be able to find the same things in the same place. So.
We initially built these with the grade level teams. It was, we were just trying to get everything into a doc, and people have their own docs that they liked. And so we just said, instead of, we want the meat of it to be there. And so if you have a line here, a line there, so the formatting, we just said, let's not worry about formatting. Let's just get the meat in there. So the teachers have this. And then now our work is just, you know, refining it.
Yeah, so when you open the folder, the, the links, they have access to a lot of different things. But this is the seventh and eighth grade social studies pacing guide. So again, has the unit, topics, the standards, and got resources over here. They go in the same order. So we just wanted you to be able to see that part of this pacing calendar or in this teaching handbook. And then Lynn's gonna talk a little bit about the vertical alignment.
So back to kind of our powered standards and essential standards. A few years ago, we really did this work. Okay, what are the things that we are gonna promise? It's gonna be USS, it's gonna be on the report card. We were promising parents and kids that you were going to master this, and then really looking developmentally. Well, initially, when we did this, we had power standards in red, and there wasn't, if first grade chose their power standard, second grade. So this has kind of evolved. Second grade had their power standards. And we definitely felt like it wasn't uniformity across. And then just recognizing with our standards, in order for us to expect mastery at fourth grade, we definitely needed there to be more intentional exposure opportunities, not necessarily assessments attached to them, but exposure opportunities maybe in the second and third grade because developmentally, if the first time you see this in fourth grade, there was no way we were setting up the fourth grade teachers to have, to expect some level of mastery or competency. So when we built this, we really said, okay, red are gonna be report card standards. These are what we are defining as essential. And if you, when you look at this doc, you'll see there are a lot of areas where they're just essential across the board because they're super important. There's, they're gonna be tested, they're part of our state assessment. They're in multi-disciplines, so they're integrated in. So we really were intentional about how we chose these. And then we really wanted to highlight purple standards of, okay, like maybe kindergarten isn't gonna expect mastery, but first grade needs to. So we really need to be intentional with it. So we tried to look at this instead of my optic within that grade level and just looking at across that vertical alignment span of how are we setting up kids for success to be able to master this? But also how are we setting up teachers so that it isn't the first exposure opportunity? So it's the fifth, and then you can just, you know, add on to that. So we did this for, you can see we have reading literature, informational texts, our foundational skills, writing, their speech and language, and we also did this for math. Some of our pacing guides, then we went in, and so red is connected to the report card. And so in our pacing guides, we'll highlight this as red. And so then we created a standard or a created a, either a formative assessment or a summative measure that then would feed into the report card. So there was intentionality with those essential standards. So again, back to our four questions, if the kids don't have it, what are we going to do? What reteaching opportunities are we gonna provide for kids? Do we need to change the delivery of the instruction? Because whatever we did the first time, it didn't work. And if we had 85% of our kids get it, these 15 did not, what are we going to do? So this allows us to have a lot of intentionality around that because this is what we've promised. So it's not arbitrary. It's, it's super important because otherwise we're, they're gonna continue. That gap's just gonna get bigger. So this is our way of hoping to maximize and close that gap with intentionality focus.
And so the standards in the instructional pacing guide that are the essential standards that are red on that vertical alignment are red in this pacing guide. So that there's, they all go, they go together.
And the other color in there, just to add, is we also have black because it is the requirement that you teach all standards. So if you're, whatever, you're ELAs at third grade teacher, you are required to teach all of them. And so then, but what things are you going to, again, are we teaching the five kids that didn't get them first quarter? Are we teaching this in second? Or I'm gonna make sure I'm reteaching this and having like their entry or exit tickets or some type of intentionality with those purple standards? But you're still covering black because we are responsible for those as well.
And oftentimes, the standards of the teachers who identify as black are the, what we call the supporting standard. So they're just, they're the exposure that we're gonna, so in first grade, they might have a standard that's black that they're exposing without any, any assessment tied to it and without any kind of expectation of any kind of mastery. And then in second grade, that same standard might be purple where they're intentionally teaching to it and maybe taking some formalist, informal assessment data from it, like through their whiteboard work, our kids starting to pick up on this skill. Because in third grade, it becomes the red standard where it's on the report card. And so we promise parents are gonna master it. So there's some real intentionality with the vertical alignment piece and how the teachers put together their pacing guides.
Okay. You'll, you'll see often it's embedded standard. So in order to do one, you're about to be able to do the other. So it's just, it's, you know.
So the other piece that we're not gonna, that we just want you to know is in here, we're not gonna take time to go through it. But as we started to do this pacing guide work with the teachers.
We go into.
We, we went into the blueprint because coming out of No Child Left Behind, as I said before, we, it was fidelity to the program. And so the teachers just turn the page of the textbook. And we had one particular grade level where they just, the kids really struggled on their state math assessment. And when we stopped and looked at the blueprint and really dug into it, what we found was 67% of the test was fractions. It was adding and subtracting fractions. It was multiplying fractions. It was using pictures to show how to divide fractions.
Different methods of being able to interpret fractions.
But when you look at our textbook at the time, fractions wasn't even introduced until. But when you look at our textbook at the time, fractions wasn't even introduced until April. And so when 67% of the assessment is fractions and we're not teaching it until after the I set window was even open, we just weren't setting them up for success. So it was, there was a lot of really good conversation about, and so that's, that's been the challenge. I mentioned math and we're going to talk about math, but that's probably been what has, it's been probably the most challenging part of instructing right now in our classroom is the tool that we had was not aligned to the blueprint for the state of Idaho. Because when publishers write a textbook and they say it's aligned to the standards, well, and that just means that all of the standards are addressed in that textbook and they're not. But, but they're, yep, they're not weighted and they also have no idea because every states, even though we're all doing aspect, states can move things around as Idaho has done. And so they have to provide a textbook that any state can adopt. And so we had to really work with the staff around being very intentional about what is it that our kids have to, what are those red standards? And so the biggest challenge for us right now, which we'll talk about a little bit later in this presentation is if, if we have to kind of pull a textbook apart a little bit to teach it in the order that makes the most sense to make sure our kids are prepared for that state assessment, how do we measure that they're actually learning the standards? So because we're kind of sometimes teaching things out of order differently than what the textbook would have us do. And so when we get to the point where we're talking a little bit about I ready, that's really the why behind that.
And I would just add, I think from a building principal standpoint, it's super important that we look at each of those for third through, at least for third through, through fifth grade for an elementary principal. But the same for junior high, high school is what's weighted and then just really matching those pacing guides. If, if, you know, 70% of the test is fractions, we're not teaching to the test, but it's still our measure and we have to be strategic. And so we do not want to put kids in front of a test that they haven't seen the material. They feel defeated because we didn't do our job. So when you look at the blueprints, it will, it's weighted of where each, it'll tell you how many problem solving questions specific to this standard or this cluster or this claim. So it's really helpful for us just as we're looking at programs and just how are we aligning? Because at the end of the day, this is our measure that we, you know, that everyone looks at. So this is our way of kind of being strategic and giving some flexibility depending on that program.
And then I won't let, click on this, but this has a list of all of the current adopted textbooks by grade level, by subject area, if you wanted to take a look at that, they're all represented here today in the boardroom. But by grade band there in here, if you wanted to take a look at that. And then, then we have just a lot of resources for our teachers. So instructional strategies around ELA math and then just instructional engagement strategies. And then we have lots of different sites that they can go to, to, to look for some help.
And again, the idea was lots and lots of links. Brand new teacher, veteran, you have a place to go. And if you're struggling, we talk about reteaching and you deliver it a certain way. If you want to have access to a different way, we wanted them to have a place to go to. So they have resources above and beyond maybe what they originally had. So. And we continue to add to it, teachers will send us really cool links and then we'll kind of go through a vetting process and we add to it and we share it out. So it's evolving for sure.
So when we were in school closure last year and from that last quarter, we had some, a lot of teachers who were finding some pretty cool sites where kids had virtual manipulatives. So they could manipulate pattern blocks and they could manipulate unit excuse. And so those links that we ended up using last year to support kids learning at home, we just linked it here. So.
Some of these resources get sent out to parents too. Like I know I have teachers that do reading aid as, so families that want to have more decodable readers beyond what we have. They have access to it. So some of this is for parents too. I definitely know teachers are sharing some of this out as well, so that families have access to additional resources.
Okay. So this is our opportunity just to check for our own understanding from our board members. So as I mentioned earlier, we used to be on that state textbook adoption cycle. And there were some benefits to doing that. One was because the, the big textbook companies went through that process at the state level. If they got their name on that state-approved site, I, and we adopted them, we actually got a, a price break because there was a contract between the state and the textbook. So it saved our district some money. And so it became, that became kind of beneficial to stay on that state adoption cycle. So up to this point, all of our textbooks, every textbook that's in this room have those, they have been on the adopted list because we've always just stuck with it because it saved us money. The one caveat to that that I want to mention is BoAC, which is right here. This is a phonics program that we have used in this district since, I want to say 1996, was when it was first adopted. It's a, it's just a phonics program. So when we adopted the Houghton Mifflin Comprehensive Reading Program, then it was the first time that we adopted a comprehensive reading program. And the definition from the publishers about what is comprehensive means that grammar's embedded, grammar instructions embedded, phonics instructions embedded, spelling is embedded and of course, comprehension is embedded.
Qualify components are repeated to get defined as a comprehensive program. Supplemental will be a singular focus.
But what phonics are right, but what we found with the comprehensive programs is that the focus even in the comprehensive program is really on comprehension. It's, it's really on, here's the story and now we're going to read it and we're going to ask questions about it. We're going to get to the comprehension part. And what we found was that the phonics was not explicit, the instruction was not explicit enough. And every comprehensive textbook that we've had in reading has expected the teachers to know every single phonics rule because it, they don't, it doesn't provide it for them. Well, there isn't a teacher around who knows every single phonics rule. So in 1996, when we adopted the Houghton Mifflin, which is, was my favorite of all of our reading adoptions. It was amazing, had great trade books for kids, wonderful literature for them to read, but the phonics was really weak. So the district adopted this BoAC program and it was a, it's a small mom and pop kind of shop. And so in order to get on the state-approved list, you, the publishers spend millions of dollars to go through research that then they can present to the state. And if you can't present the research, you can't get on that state list. So this company has never gone through that because it is a very small business. But when we look at our, and I looked it up, I looked for our history, but since I only have data for the district since I started in this position, our test scores were really high, I R I scores were really high in the district. And then when Don't Tell Left Behind came and we were told fidelity to the program and we adopted Scott Forstman reading, we were told we couldn't use this anymore. And our reading scores at primary level started to drop because we were not, kids were not strong decoders. And then we started having closet teachers who were teaching BoAC with their doors closed, hoping that nobody was going to see them. But we started asking questions when suddenly we had these pockets where the scores were going way up again. And, and so then we had to sit down with the superintendent at the time and have a conversation and say, you know, I think we have some data that shows that we, we need the two of these combined. So we've been using this program in the district since 96, when it was adopted by the board. As far as I know, it's the only one that wasn't on that state adopted textbook. But this is what we would call supplemental because it isn't comprehensive and it does have a singular focus, but it's an outstanding phonics program.
Another asset to that program is, is if you're a first year teacher coming out of college, I guess you have some of those reading classes, but it's hard to know, you've got there's a phonics test. It's hard to know all of those pieces. This is a great tool of just really walking through the why behind the rules, really integrating spelling in so that you understand beyond just the conceptual level of what you're doing. I feel like it does a really good job of just integrating from K two all the way up. So the teachers who use it have a really strong foundation in a sense of just understanding the why behind all the rules and solification, word attack skills, all of those pieces. That there isn't any other program that does it as well with BoAC. It's in the sense of just teachers own, building their capacity.
Yeah. The expectation of that program is that the kids learn and can recite the rules so that spelling isn't a guessing game. There's, there's actually a rule that they can apply. So we wanted to talk just a little bit about the difference between the I ready math that we're going to bring to you and then the I ready assessment that we're going to bring to you. So this school year, as a result of last year's school shutdown and concern for learning loss, we piloted the I ready assessment for math. K eight. And then we piloted I station assessment for ELA, K six, because I station is what the state pays for and what we use for our I R I K three. So we thought, well, let's just see. And the, the thing about this pilot that was enticing for our principals was it would give them some longitudinal data, looking at the whole building to start to see some trends and areas where as a building, we're strong across all grade levels and maybe some areas as a building where like vocabulary might be a weakness at all grade levels. And we really need to beef up instruction there. So.
We really pushed this from a building principal standpoint. Kathy and I actually kind of led the charge on this of just being able to look at, so K one, you know, two, three, this is where the kids are, we're looking at curriculum holes, we're looking at instructional holes, just being able to look at building district, are there areas that we can beef up? Because again, we are promising our parents and our kids that we're going to do right and we're going to do everything we can to close that gap. But we didn't have any way looking beyond fourth grade. So, you know, we have our ISAP, but that's a summative measure. So there was no benchmarks along the way for us to really check for understanding or really to give comparative, like, okay, we see this kid, this trajectory is going up, but all of a sudden we see a big dip in fourth grade and fifth grade. We had no way of being able to, until the very end, to make any changes. So this for us was a big deal of just, do we have assessment tools that really allow us to see, one, are our kids generalizing what we teach in isolation? So we're reading stories, we're doing vocabulary, we're doing spelling, we're doing grammar. A summative standardized norm test is going to ask it in a different way and multiple different ways. Do we have the ability to see, can our kids generalize those skills that shows true mastery? So that was our hope. So in prior to that, we didn't really have a math assessment that we were doing. We had those individual tests with Go Math. Then again, are we looking at norm data? How are we compared to the state? Are there dips for us in our instruction and tools that we're using? This was our way of really being able to make smart decisions where we didn't feel like we necessarily were able to do that. We had pockets of being able to do that, but not from a K through five kind of trajectory, does that make sense?
So, and this is where I, we need some feedback, I guess, from you guys. So we can maybe do that during the workshop, but just to kind of have in the back of your mind. When we think about the I ready assessment piece, we don't think about that in the same way that we think about a textbook because it truly is a, it's a, it's, it's a benchmark fall, winter, spring, where we're doing a diagnostic assessment of kids to see, are they growing? Are they gaining mastery of standards? It does, when they do that diagnostic, it does figure out where their skill gaps are and it, and it provides an individual pathway. So through some games and things, kids can do some practicing to fill in some of those holes.
Parents can access that from home as well and several of them over COVID and when we shut down, absolutely used it.
Okay. So in, so, so in my mind, when I'm thinking about an assessment tool like that, it's not, it's not a textbook that we're putting in front of kiddos. So we're going to, in the next slide, we're going to actually talk about a textbook adoption versus a, an assessment or a supplemental resource approval from the board to use. In my mind, those two things are different. So we, we will bring to you a request to be able to continue to use I ready next year as the assessment tool. But then we're also, because, because our math tool, well, the adoption has ended and the math tool was not well-aligned with, with regard to forcing teachers to pull the, the scope and sequence apart so that they're teaching it in order, so that the things that need to be taught and mastered are taught prior to the test at the end of the year. We are going to pilot some math textbooks as we go through a full-blown math textbook adoption and which requires patron participation, board member participation, and it truly is a year-long process. So we just, I just want to make sure that when we get to the workshop part and we talk about this, that you, that that makes sense to you and that you're not feeling like we, you want us to do this differently. So we're going to just kind of.
One other plug, I would, go ahead.
No, no, no.
One other plug, I would just say for I ready assessment, it would be the same for I S E P, which is our state measure as well for K through three, is this allows us to see those splintered skills. So it shows us maintenance of standards. So typically like if you just have a textbook and you have a chapter test or you have a unit test, it's specific to that isolated standard that you taught in that moment. And so then, so you've taught that first quarter renowned, the third quarter. These assessments really allow us to see, have you been able to maintain mastery of those standards? Do we need to do some additional reteaching or just like a day or two of exposure? It's an entry, it's an exit ticket versus, I know in isolation, what you're doing, but I don't have that longevity of you're maintaining all of that through the course of the four quarters. Does that make sense? So when you have a norm standardized test, that's what it allows you to do is that maintenance of standards. And then it shows you splintered skills, like, oh, you know, half the class forgot fractions. Because I taught that the second week of school, I need to go back and revisit that for intentionality purposes.
Now on the I ready assessment, is that appropriate regardless of the math programs that you're using? Or is it targeted to the I ready math? It's appropriate for whatever math program we adopt it. Because it is completely aligned to the Idaho math standards. And then on the ELA side, it's aligned to the Idaho ELA standards.
Okay. One, I'm just going to throw a plug for the little, I, I'm a template person. So I was concerned about that as well. And so I'll share this with you guys later. But I actually put the programs that we've talked about wanting to look at for, I wanted to compare. So I put side by side, what's taught in first quarter, what's taught in second quarter, what's. So regardless of where we are, are there standards that they're emphasizing that we're not? So it was good to just see that from multiple math programs, how it aligns to our assessment tool.
Okay. Okay. So this is the last little bit, then we just get to sit and have a conversation. We're really excited about the conversation part. So we, these are links that we just wanted to share with you. So as we're thinking about this curriculum cycle, this is where we were really this year for math, where we were really envisioning and planning. We did the needs assessment, we've been looking at data. We haven't done this part yet. We're looking at next year, the pilot year, where our teachers are going to pilot some math programs and they'll get to use them all year long. And because they do teach the same skills, kind of in the same order, we're still going to get to have some really good conversations about, okay, we just taught multi-digit multiplication using the area model in fourth grade. I used this program and I loved the way they introduced this. And, and somebody else might say, well, I use this program and it was kind of clunky here. Did the kids struggled with it? It's going to give them the opportunity to really talk about the standards and whether or not it was, the learning was easily accessible for the kids. What, how teacher-friendly is the program? Can they find what they need? So this is the cycle that we're, we're talking about. Because when we adopt curriculum, it's important to go beyond this pilot year, where then at the end of the year, we come to the board and ask you to, we recommend to you a program that the adoption committee has said, this is our number one. And then we implement it, there's professional development. But it can't stop here because we need to continue to monitor. Are we really getting the results for kids that we want to get? Is there something we're missing that we need to fine tune? So it's just an ongoing, but, but the part that often gets left out is this part where people don't want to take the time to come back and evaluate what, what has been, excuse me, what's been implemented. So, so this is if, sorry.
No, I was going to say, this is just where we're really integrating best practices around instruction. Like are they utilizing engagement and attention strategies? And do we have to beef that up? So it might not be something where we're necessarily changing the curriculum per se, but we're just infusing more research-based, evidence-based practices that are going to ensure mastery.
So if we were going to get back into something that looked a little bit like that state adopted, adoption cycle, and we're not suggesting that we need to adopt a new textbook every year, but when we kind of look at needs based on. But when we kind of look at needs based on changes to standards. For sure, our elementary and middle level people are saying math, we absolutely need a math textbook. They're, they're very good at teaching without a textbook in some of these other areas. But in math in particular, they are, they're really afraid that if we don't have a textbook that kind of is guiding the skills that we're teaching kids, that they may inadvertently leave something out, which could create a hole in their learning. So they, that it's, this is one is really important. And then the state has completely changed the science standards and none of our textbooks are aligned anymore. So if we were going to go down this hole, this, this path, this was, this is kind of the order in which we would look at it.
Hasn't it been 20 years since we've adopted the social studies?
Well, no, fairly. Science was. It's been, science was probably, it was before I came here and this is my seventh year. So it's probably been eight or nine years since we did science. And then social studies was before that. And we actually, when I was in this position, when the state still had their adoption cycle, social studies came up. And, but when we went out to the socials, to our teachers, they felt like we didn't really need to spend $500,000 on a new textbook adoption because history hasn't really changed. And so the tools that they were using, they all liked. But our social study standards have significantly changed since then. And so there is a need, okay, at this point, to do something different, whenever that something is. So this is just a, if we were going to go down that road, this is what it would look like.
So this is the proposed timeline that we just kind of put together tentatively for you, obviously giving us some feedback if you want to change that. But just, we've already started looking at curriculum review and then I'm looking at publishers. And then the idea is that we're getting that team together, board members, teachers, community members.
Can I just jump in here quickly? Our board policy, I think it's 2520. I have it on the other slide. Tells us that we, we have to get approval from the board to put the curriculum committee together. So that is, we are intending to bring that this summer to you. So that when we come back in the fall, we can get that started. So if, if, everything about this timeline kind of is in your hands as far as approval goes.
But the idea is really that we're just meeting monthly and we're really just looking at, we have a rubric and we're looking at the rubric and evaluating the data. So we're all making the reinforced decisions. And so at the point when we bring it to you guys, the end for approval. You've all been invested in this process and there's a deep understanding of which we all, hopefully we all love the same program. And it's user-friendly and easy and good to go.
So the intention would be that we would bring a recommendation through superintendent to the board in March. And then with the hope that in April, it could be an action item. So a discussion item in March, an action item in April. And we would have at least hopefully two board members on that committee. Who could be kind of keeping the other board members up to speed on what we're looking at and what, what you see as the pros and cons of the different programs.
Okay.
So that's kind of, and, and this is the timeline that we would follow for any textbook adoption. It is a really lengthy time, time. Time consumed, intensive, thank you.
We want to make the right decision.
Because when we adopted math the last time, it was right after the math standards changed. And our Go Math and Big Ideas said, you know, we're aligned to the new standards. Well, aligned to the new standards just meant that the standards are all in the textbook somewhere, but not necessarily aligned the way we needed them to be aligned. So we've learned a lot since then about taking our time and making sure that it's, the rigor is where we need it to be. But really, is it, is the learning accessible to the kiddos? Is there such a, for example, our teachers participated in the beta pilot this last year for Illustrated Math, which was their pilot, not ours. They needed teachers using their materials and giving feedback because they were building that platform. And, but the, probably the one concern from the teachers was there's, there's such an expectation. Because Illustrated Math instruction looks so different from what you would typically see in the classroom. And there's the, the expectation that kids have had, have had mastery of what came before. Became a little bit of a barrier for them this, using it. Because the kids didn't have the prerequisite skills that they needed to. And so we, as we do it, that has to be part of the conversation is can the kids access this learning? So that's really important.
We, so we, as we've done this.
Readiness for them.
Yeah.
That's appropriate. We have definitely.
The last link is just, we put this again, it's a, a proposed, we, kind of a vetting process bringing to you.
So not the textbook, but the supplemental.
Just the approval process. So again, you know, there's a Google form, they fill out in that form. It's just asking like, what is this for? Which program? Which grade level? Which tier? So that you, you guys are having pretty valid information regarding how we plan to use this tool. The building principal, the teacher are using this tool. And so then this is just kind of the flow of that process.
Well, would be getting that for all of the supplements that we're.
Right. So one of the things we are working on, this, this format would be moving beyond this summer. This, our intention this summer is at the June 24th board meeting. That we would bring a list to you of the, those supplemental resources. And some of them, they're, I'm going to have their links and we're going to have to click through and look at them. And then because curriculum is, is one thing that statutorily, our patrons are supposed to have some input into. So we would bring this to you in June. And then, then there would be a discussion item at the next board meeting. So that if you have any questions about anything, if, if we didn't know the answer to it, we could follow up for you. But just address any of those. And then the following board meeting, there would be an action item for board approval. And then at, at that point, I would assume that you would go through and that list. And if there were any that you were concerned about, that those would not be approved. But then we could just approve the rest and kind of, or however you want to do it. But then moving forward, because one of the things that our ISBA training, she said, you know, kind of start where you are and go forward. So moving forward then, anything new that came up where a teacher has a friend who teaches in a different state and they have this great resource and they bring it to the principal prior to them using it in the classroom. The principal would fill out the Google form. And if it's an elementary person, it would go to Dr. Casely. If it's secondary, it comes to me. And then we would take it to our district leadership team and talk about budget. How much does it cost? Is this something that we have capacity in the budget to do? If it's approved, then we would let the principal know that it was approved and that we're presenting it to the board. So it goes here.
Okay.
And then it would be that same process where the, we'd present it to you, then two weeks later. It would be a discussion item, so if you have questions. And, and then two weeks after that, it could be an action item. And then once we present it to you on that Thursday, the following Friday, I would work with Chrissy or Lynn would work with Chrissy. And we would send out parent notification, letting them know that this was presented to the board for consideration. And then just if you have any input that you want to provide, you can, you can send that to either the board clerk or directly to board members.
Okay.
Because we do want to honor the fact that patrons have.
But you're saying only her, it's, you're not saying futures in that, it's parent notification. How are you going to let the rest of the public know?
Well.
Because we have more than just parents that are patrons of our school districts.
Right. And we can put it on our website and we can put it out on our Facebook page. And all of those social media, I guess, outlets. So if the board has a different way for, that you would like for us to think about, we certainly are open to that.
We would also love if you just kind of looked at this form in some way and just give us feedback if there's additional questions we should be asking or removing some of the questions we do have on there. The idea is that we're giving you as much information. So initially, you're feeling like you're making a reinforced decision about how we plan to use that program.
And that's, I think, all that we have for the actual presentation. Again, we didn't really want to inundate you with a lot of forms and document docs to look at. But just wanted to kind of whet your appetite a little bit. So then when we move into the workshop part, we can just have a really good conversation. And we definitely are looking for input and feedback from you guys. So with your permission, what we would suggest is that maybe we take a 15 or 20 minute break.
Okay.
And just give you guys some time to kind of look at, peruse some of the textbooks that we, there are a lot here.
Yeah.
And we've labeled the tables so that you can kind of see what grade bands they are assigned to. And then, so we could maybe come back together in like 20 minutes and then.
Sure, 6:30 we'll, we'll get back in.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you for the presentation.
If there's any questions, like when you walk around.
Okay.
I didn't even have to say that out loud.
Gave you a lot of information. Definitely, I would love some feedback from you guys as far as, does, does, we were thinking about a textbook adoption versus supplemental materials and approval for those? Does that make sense to you? Does it feel like it meets our policy in order of the law?
Yes, I mean, we do need to review and approve all the supplemental. Especially since, I mean, if things were brought in from COVID, which were great. And then respectfully, I don't know, like we were just talking about the FAA.
I could, I mean, how do we, how do we want to do that?
Yeah, because that curriculum was never approved. The course was, but.
Well, yeah, the program was.
Right.
Each course individually, but not the textbook.
Right. And so we, we do need to get that approved.
How would you like me to go about doing that, since they're being used right now? I guess in my mind, a full-blown textbook adoption committee, like a year-long thing, doesn't seem appropriate for that.
Well, what if we had them do a write-up like they did for the courses that we approved to be implemented at Lakeland? If they did a write-up of the standards and.
I mean, those we have, and those were approved. What wasn't approved at the time was, we didn't go through that textbook adoption.
Right. Well, because, and this is just me speaking, not as the board. Because FAA is very specific. And I know that, forgive me, I do not recall her name, but the gal that's.
Jackie.
I mean, all of her time and effort that went into that program to establishing and doing all of the whole nine yards. Not discrediting any of her effort, I do think that if she could maybe just summarize why those books were chosen and what they're targeting within a program that's being taught. And then, you know, I guess the books just come and we discuss it and we vote on it.
So maybe more like a supplemental process where we bring it, we, I can explain each of the books to you and give you the synopsis. And then we can let patrons know that you're going to, we're looking at approval. And then two weeks later, we have the discussion item on the agenda where you can ask questions. Especially, and if you could, if you had, if the board had questions ahead of that, I could work with Jackie to get them answered. So then if we're answering those in the public session, and then two weeks later, we become as an action item to be. Do that over the course of the summer, so that we start all.
Yes, I think that would be ideal because, I mean, the course is rolling. I know we've just, did we approve for it to go into Lakeland too?
Yeah.
Yeah. Are they using the same texts? Or will they be using different texts? My understanding is the CTE only, technical education only accepts certain requirements. So I don't know exactly how that, I need to ask the CTE director, Dr. Wong, how that works. Because they're so specific, because they're industry-specific. I think they only approve certain things. So I need to do that in my follow-up to ask him. How that works when it goes, because if it, if it has to go through, like, let's say there's a brand-new CTE course. How would we go through the curricular adoption process if the CTE only has certain?
Right, if they only allow us.
Yeah, because it's industry-specific, so it's different than academic where you have different. So I'm going to ask them how that happens. Okay, because what my assumption was, which is never a good thing. When we adopted FFA at Lakeland, it was coinciding with what we have at Timberlake. So my assumption would be they'd be using the same curricular material. That being said, if it's adopted in one school, then when it is approved to go into another one, it would just roll and it would be an issue. Because it's district approval. Yes, right, the materials, yes. Okay. So, but yeah, we do need to get that approved.
So I will work to bring that at the same time that we bring the others. So it's all one big curriculum package.
Yes. Okay, that would be great. And then, because I don't, to my knowledge, there isn't any other course that we've approved that has, has recently been implemented. It was in last year.
Right. The last five that I brought to you, the only textbook that we had, it was the Art Talk, which has already been approved. And then there were some supplemental resources that I'm going to bring. So the Dave Ramsey Financial, personal financial literacy. That will be on that list. And then the Louise's Literature book that Shannon's going to use. The kids won't actually see it, but she's going to use it to kind of drive her instructions. So you need to approve that. So those will be.
Well, there was one, I don't remember which course it was, because there were so many. But it was redirecting in her synopsis of how things were going to do. She was directing the case to a book.
Was it the speech?
I don't recall.
It was, I know it was a TED Talk.
The TED Talks. Yeah, it was, that was, right. But that one, it was, it appeared by the instruction she gave. That that book was paralleling whatever activities the kids were going to have to do. So is that being used as curriculum? If it is, that's fine. Just bring us the book and go from there.
Yeah, so I'll go back through those by course and make sure that those are all on that.
Okay. Yeah. Because we would need all the supplemental material for those versus as well. Now, just so we can sort of have it placed on record, with my understanding, for me, when I keep saying, what's the foundational curriculum? And I have graduated from elementary levels a long time ago. So, you know, kids had, or teachers had their textbooks and their teaching guides. And then they built from that off of what they were teaching with whatever resources, supplements, et cetera. So from my understanding, we have, in a sense, steered away from that through the utilization of the instructional pacing calendars. Is that correct?
The, the instructional pacing calendars provide the agreement on what standards are we teaching in what order. And, and for a lot of them, they're based on the tool that they're using. Because it doesn't necessarily make sense to take a textbook and completely take it out of order.
Right.
In order to teach it. So we, each time we adopt a new textbook, we have to go back to that instructional pacing calendar and kind of tweak it.
Okay.
So, so they do kind of go together. We've, because we weren't adopting textbooks in the last few years, we, they are not tied to a textbook anymore. And it really, right now, is in order based on how the teachers have taught and the hierarchy and the progression of skills. So when we adopt a math textbook at the end of next year, there will be some summer curriculum work for grades K through eight. Where they're going to have to look at their current instructional calendar and the scope and sequence of the textbook. To create something that makes sense so that we're not pulling the textbook apart.
Okay. So then, based on everything that's out here, for elementary reading, every teacher has a teaching guide for journeys. Is that correct? So that's the foundational curriculum that we're building off of for elementary reading. So that's the foundational curriculum that we're building off of for elementary reading. Okay. Elementary science is the National Geographics. Every teacher has their teaching guide, et cetera, for that program.
They do, but that's not what we're using anymore, because it's not aligned to the standards. So when you look at primary science standards, what's in the second grade, second grade science standards are not necessarily, those are not necessarily in those textbooks anymore. It's, they have been completely renamed.
So we're not using those anymore?
They can, they can pick and choose, and it might be that a second-grade teacher has a, an earth science standard that actually is in the third-grade earth science textbook. So they could borrow some of those materials and share them. But Emily, Sarah, our science coach, did a great job of making sure that teachers have all of the resources that are moved into there.
And those were just updated by the legislature. I don't remember the whole controversy and they had public opinion and all that. Those, those just got done last legislative session before this one. So.
The standards.
The standards for science. So it's not like it's, it just is brand-new and the state hasn't eaten product yet. In fact, they're putting out things for people, help, please help with this new science adoption at the state level.
So I would say definitely teachers have access to that, but they're not, it's not reliable in the sense of what they really need to be teaching. And so especially for fifth grade, we have a ISAT science test. That's not the resource that we can use to expect any proficiency with our students.
Okay, I was just curious why we, why we have them here if we weren't using them. But it makes sense that we are still using.
I would say it's definitely more supplemental now. It cannot be a core curriculum that supplement a lot of best. And, and, and just to answer that question, our intent was to make sure that everything that we have that's board-approved that you, you have access to, so you can see what has been approved by the board.
So then, it would be fair to say that the science then is the foundation, is the calendar. Okay.
I mean, in my, my mind, if I'm going to use the term that you are using, I would say that foundational curriculum is the instructional pacing calendar and the board-adopted textbook. And all teachers have access to both.
It's ideal because they go together.
It just isn't for science right now, right?
Well, I would say when it doesn't align, is then when we're looking at a new adoption, because maybe the standards have changed. And we recognize that the bigger copy I accept the program that we have is not producing the results that we need. So there's a curricular problem. So when we're looking at that longitudinal data, there's a problem in what we're delivering. And whether we're, it's too hard or it's too easy, like that's what, that's what we're best at work. We talk about in step three and four of that alignment of, okay, so we have this program. So journeys, for instance, is a great example. We adopted it, we started going through it, and so the anthology, teachers were like, okay, this, the grammar piece, it's not really cohesive in what we're teaching, the spelling patterns, it's just like, it's the, it's the tip of the iceberg what they're teaching. Or we have these other supplemental programs that go way deeper and our kids are producing. So that's the evidence-based piece of, we're doing a much better job of bringing this in and unifying those two, because that makes sense. So singularly, a lot of our programs, and I would tell you, any comprehensive program, singularly, there's parts of it that are really good, but it never in its singular state are we on, we're always going to have to add something in there, specifically with phonics from the five components of reading, because, you know, they're spending a lot of time on those anthologies. So it's all the text that they're reading. They're trying to build vocabulary and background knowledge and scheme and all those native strategies. But not necessarily, like, we need all five components to be really strong. So a lot of them is out of writing. So our pacing guide is really our tool of bringing, our organizational tool, bringing it all together. And we're always looking at alignment. Here's the standards, here's our tool. And as long as the tool's working, great. But the moment it's not, then we're looking at the next thing to strengthen what we're putting in front of kids. Does that make sense? Did I explain that? Okay?
Well, rolling back over to the science though.
Yes.
Because that no longer meets the standards, I would assume that that is no longer the foundational curriculum we're using. With that being said, it sounds like it's rolling to a resource or a supplement, because it's not going to take a teacher from point one to point ten, because it's not meeting whatever standards, it's not meeting. The instructional calendar, because I'm looking at it, you know, for kindergarten starts with forces, energy, life science, earth science, we, or life science or science, then it's, and then we go to first grade with waves, life science, earth science. So your calendar is targeted in on the topics that need to be covered and taught. And then there are, it appears, there is an assessment tool, there's, you know, not necessarily instruction on, this is how you teach it. But this is what you should consider covering when you're teaching forces, like wind and roller coasters and slides.
Right, and, and those things that she's put in there, she's also created then the science kits that teachers can check out that have all the materials in them to do, to actually do the science. So.
So each grade, each element has the kit? Okay.
We were going to take you on a tour downstairs.
We, we talked about bringing.
There are a lot of them.
And so we're like, okay, we bring those up, they don't need enough for people in this room, but they are downstairs, you may have to take a look at them.
Okay, but we.
They're organized, I agree.
Okay, so, but we do have those resources based on the content that needs to be tied. There's just no textbook.
Right, alright.
Got it. Okay, yeah, because we.
And that was previously adopted, so that's why it's here and it's still being used as a resource.
Right. Right.
That's right. Yeah, the new science standards are, they are phenomena-based. So the, the way that they roll out to teachers is you show some phenomena. And Emily, when she was working with our teachers, she would start for professional development with phenomena. Like, she would have these canisters and they would roll differently. And the teachers had to figure out why they rolled differently. Or they, she would have them do some little kind of experiment. That didn't have to be this big gigantic mystical kind of thing, you know? But just a, why is that happening? Sometimes it's a video, like they showed a video or a picture of a car in the middle of what used to be a lake, except now it's all sand. Okay, what happened?
Or did the water?
Definitely one of the three things. So it's, yeah, so that's, that's cool. How's, and then they start thinking about, what do I know about science and how does that apply to what I'm looking at? And then they start doing their own experiments to kind of prove some of that.
Okay.
That's how the new science standards are put together. So those books are really focused on, here's some science vocabulary, and now we're going to read about the science vocabulary. And you're going to answer some questions about it, which is not what science really is supposed to be. So the focus is actually in putting things in kids' hands. That's our, yeah.
Do you think the legislature will change, because they did last session too, do you think they'll change the science, bring up the science standards again?
I don't, I'm not hearing that. I, they, it came up again, just because they wanted to kind of clarify some of the patrons' concerns processing about evolution and climate change.
So you think it's done?
Yeah, it's done. I think they've addressed those things that they needed to.
What does NGVSS?
Next Generation Science Standards.
Okay. So that's what's been adopted?
They are now called the Idaho Standards.
We have, I have none of that.
Those are the best that are actually challenged.
I like to call it that.
Yes.
I better put that in the abbreviations now. Thank you for bringing that up.
Well, Idaho's been pretty intentional, because when we adopted the core standards, with just the word common core or the phrase common core sent to people's teeth on edge. And so as soon as Idaho adopted the standards, they changed the name of them to Idaho Content Standards. So now we have the Idaho Math Content Standards and in Idaho, we have the Content Standards. Because we actually did send, put it out to our patrons across the state and asked for input. So, and there were some changes that were made with regard, based on the input. So they did the same with the Next Generation Science Standards.
Okay. No, I appreciate you saying that you had all those assessments for the teachers, but they didn't, it's not like a requirement that they have to go from the one to the two to the three. How often are teachers required to assess the kiddos prior to taking a standardized test?
So I would, we really don't have a requirement on formative assessments. And formative assessments don't necessarily mean it's a paper and pen. It could be a whiteboard practice. It could be the student just showcasing their learning, because they came out here frontward. So formative could be any measure. It could be, you know, that you're walking around and there is a student-to-student interaction and you're there being able to articulate their findings or their learning. And you, as the teacher, are walking by and say, okay, this student has, it's really the teacher's ability to completely assess what they learned in that moment in the progression of what you're trying to teach them. So we really don't have a directive around how many formative you have to give. You have to do a report card assessment. So for sure, quarterly, there's some type of measure so that we're determining mastery. Part of our debate and conversations have been around how many assessments are you giving prior to? So you don't want to have a one-stop shop. So for example, if I'm teaching fractions and, you know, they build upon. Math is just easy because it's a foundation and you add to it, right? And just continue and get a little bit more in-depth. And so the first couple of times, like I taught fractions with remaining, and now I'm adding fractions with whole numbers. And now I'm asking you to put it on a number line, and now I'm asking them to put that into double-digit numbers type of a thing. So conceptually, like I may understand how to do, you know, one-half plus three-fourths, but now I'm talking about three and three-fourths and five and four fifths or whatever, right? And so as it gets harder, we're just, we're, again, we're doing those little mini-formative assessments, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's a paper or pen. It's just, are they, as we're continuing to add on layers of math, is it getting harder? Are they staying with me as we keep going? Then we have a report card assessment. So that's our, kind of our benchmark of where are we at with mastery? Because then the next week, we start in the second quarter, obviously, we're going to add another layer to that. We're literally shifting gears and now we're not getting fractions anymore, and we're moving to decimals. So it really is up to the teacher with the idea that you will have that mastery-based assessment for recordably, so that you can report to parents. At this moment, this is where they're at. We've had lots of conversations about not having that be a one-stop shop. So it's like, it's a, everything falls on that one test. And so we're giving some additional opportunities. So when you put that in grade and we're saying that they're, you know, proficient or basic, that we, we're not just pulling it from one lens. We have, you know, a combination of scores that we can pull that from. So, but really, the, I guess, the directive will be that it's a mastery-based report card time, with the idea that you build up to some formative.
Okay, so I just wanted to add a little bit to what Lynn just said. One of the ways, easy ways to think about formative versus summative is, a formative test is kind of like a physical that you, so you go in to see your doctor and they identify that, oh, your cholesterol level's a little bit higher than we want it to be. So I'm going to have you take this, this medication, but I want you to change your diet. And then you go back and you're tested again, how's the, how's the, and so that's what the formative assessment is, is that's what we're teaching. We are, it's assessment for learning. So it's as, and as they're learning, so that it gives the teacher information about what they're mastering and what they still need help with, so that we can keep growing them. The summit assessment at the end of the quarter that Lynn's talking about is kind of like an autopsy. You know, you do it and then you, there, you don't necessarily do anything with it. So the ISAT is the perfect example of an autopsy. It's, it happens at the end of the year. We don't really get any great usable data from it. Doesn't help the right instruction. It truly is some, a summative measure, but what did you learn this year? And so that sometimes makes it a little bit easier to kind of understand the difference. We do a lot of formative assessments daily, just whiteboard work or as Lynn said. Some teachers like to do a little exit ticket, others like to do an entry task. It just depends on how the teacher structures the day, that they're constantly checking in on kids and how they're doing with whatever concepts they're teaching.
It's, it's really a way for us to determine, so when our pace is to a point of, okay, like, I have eighty-five percent of the kids are getting this, so I need to recruit these five kids back into a small group. Or we can move on to the next big concept, because all of my kids are showing mastery on this and we can kind of move on. So that's how we use formative assessments, with the idea that then you're going to report with the assessment. You're kind of putting all of that together, and that's where it's more abstract, it's a little bit more rigorous. Can they pull all of that together and answer a question?
I'm, I'm here, I'm listening.
Do you have any, do you have any questions?
I can't hear you and talk at the same time.
So ask her again.
Do you, do you have any questions?
Not at this point, thank you.
So when I'm looking at the second grade ELA pacing guide, we have weeks one through nine, and we have six standards in red. Now, with them being these one through nine, journey resources, and we have additional resources. How, how do you know that the kids, if a child leaves from John Brown and goes to Twin Lakes, how do you know that that child is not going to either have a hole or a miss or even be in the same novel series? How do you know? If there isn't a standardized format, true, that's probably not a fair word, traditional format of, here's your teacher's resource, textbook, case, whatever. How do you know? What's your assurance that that's not going to happen to a kiddo whose parents have to move from Hauser to Twin Lakes Village, that that kid can transfer and there's not going to be a displacement? Because there, this teacher's approach is completely different than this teacher's approach. And we don't have the requirement that, you know, in week one, everybody is learning letter A. And in week two, everybody's, how, how do we know?
So when you get beyond first grade, because they really have their stuff there, like, they're all doing the same BOLAC lessons in the same week.
Okay.
So I have a lot of confidence that kids are going to have in, in first grade, that, that, we're not going to have that. As you get into the upper grades, the standards are not so skill-specific and they're, they start to be a little bit more general. But they work on the same skill all year long. So for example, in ELA, they, they have to be able to read expository texts or nonfiction texts, and they need to be able to cite evidence in their responses. And they need to be able to answer inferential questions. They do that all year long. And it doesn't matter what texts they're using, the expectations around those standards are the same. So I could be reading a text about, as a second grader, about the pilgrims in November. And you could be reading a text in November about President Lincoln. But the skill that we're both showing is the same. So, so that makes it a little bit easier as they get, move through the upper grades in ELA.
Except if I'm the one that's reading about Lincoln and then I have to change schools and I'm supposed to have been reading about the pilgrims, I'm not behind.
Now, because I suppose if you started Lincoln on Monday, you moved on Tuesday and wear the second day of reading about the pilgrims, that will, that will happen sometimes. That's pretty easy for the teachers to kind of figure out how to fill them.
Okay.
But if you, I guess, when you get into the upper grades, if you move and they're halfway through a novel and you aren't reading that novel, if you are my student, I would, you can, you either can kind of bring them up to speed on what has happened in the novel so far and then have them continue to read with you. Or if you're close to being done, it could, it could be an alternate assignment for that kiddo for the next two days, only if the class finishes it novel. Our teachers are really adept at doing that for kids when they come. And it's not just kids who move in our own district.
Right.
It's, that, it really is not a big deal. It's when they come from outside of our district that we, because our teachers are really good at being on the same page. They may not always be using exactly the same text. They may not always be using exactly the same text when they're reading. Um, math, they're on the same page as far as like fifth grade, we're all doing um, equivalent fractions for the next two weeks. And so, um, the, the greater challenge for us is when kids move from outside of our district because Lakeland has very high standards and expectations for student learning. And when kids come from other districts, they are not where our kids are. And, and so our teachers are also really good at doing some quick formative assessments to kind of start to gauge where they are with some of the skills that I've already taught, what do I need to fill in? Um, then we put interventions in place so kids get small group instruction. Um, maybe they need some title assistance. Um, it just depends on how, how far the skill gap goes.
Okay.
Um, but we definitely have systems in place to catch those kids and, and, um, fill in holes when we need to.
Okay.
We've worked really hard. When you think, when I go back to that historical perspective, because we, when I first started, I was, I was teaching first grade at John Brown when I first got hired and there were five of us teaching together first grade. And we had, we were doing some really cool things, but it wasn't anything like what they were doing at Apple. And I don't even know what they were doing at Apple because I didn't ever talk to the Apple first grade teachers. So we were so, we weren't, we were not talking to it. There was no, this idea of collaboration that didn't exist.
Well, all these districts were in a district.
Yep, exactly was what. Right, and so then, so then, um, then when Dr. Rannells came, um, to, as our superintendent, she brought with her this idea of professional learning communities where great old teams came together and was really important to the board and to Dr. Rannells at that time that a child's education didn't, didn't rely solely on his or her zip code. Where if they're in this zip code, you do things like this. And if you're at this, you do things like that. And we have little pockets where it was very competitive at that time. The, um, the district office administration really kind of pitted against each other because they used our test scores and, you know, Benny Kiefer always had really high test scores. Twin Lakes has always had really high test scores. And it makes other people feel badly and so they're bringing, creating this um, team together where we're, we're all responsible for all of our kids. It was very competitive and so because people didn't want to be the ones with the lower test score. So then they started doing things that were working in private and not sharing because they, it was, it was not healthy.
No.
And so we've come a long way from there when Dr. Meyer came and we started working together. Um, and I got to take kind of, uh, the lead with collaboration at the district level. That was the very first thing I had to tackle was I had to build this, I had to build a sense of safety for the teams. And I just, first thing I told them was, I'm, we are going to talk about state test scores because we have to. But we're just going to look at our district score for your grade level. And we're going to talk all together because we are all responsible for this group of three hundred and fifty third graders this year. How do we all work together to make sure that we're maximizing our growth? It doesn't matter what school we're in. So we, all of that work had to be done before we could really start dialing in some of our curriculum stuff. So that's, so that consistency is really important.
Our teachers are just, they're willing to share. They want what's best for all kids. So if somebody has a great idea and has, you know, delivered it and we're releasing, seeing strong evidence of proficiency, they are willing to share it. Materials every day, so across the district and any and every building. So I mean, it's really cool to watch them collaborate and just share. There's no jealousy, there's no pit against each other. And they want all kids to be successful.
Yeah, it's really healthy. We learn that right now for teachers, I think. Good work together. So, but it's come a long way. It sounds like it.
I'm just looking through some of the.
And they're definitely, you'll notice as you look through them, some are, like I think kindergarten, first grade are probably um, the most dialed in, but they've been working the closest as a collaborative team for the longest.
Okay.
And I like the fourth grade pacing that I do because it's super clean. It's not, it's just, there aren't so many columns and links.
Right.
So it's just, it's a preference.
Yeah, right now I'm looking at the fifth grade and I'm like, whoa.
Yes, so you can tell where some of the grade levels still have some work to be, to, to do. And it, it's part of that cycle where we're constantly evaluating.
So an assessment rubric would be something that the teacher uses when she's just evaluating the student throughout the class?
Okay, that way, um, some of our grade levels really like the rubric because they feel like then they're scoring similarly. So an A or a four in Michelle Thompson's classroom looks the same as it does in Lynn Patsley's classroom and the same as it does in my classroom.
It's really how we incorporated the calibration. So a four, it's like when you're talking about writing, a four is a four. So is it gonna have a topic sentence, three supporting details? It's gonna have standard quality, it's gonna have voice in there. So I think it's not arbitrary or subjective. Um, the other thing that rubers and just kind of what we've been doing is this is we've totally pushed the last, since Dr. Meyer came, we started student conferences and just goal setting for students. And then having some ownership of the things that they want to accomplish. And so a rubric, because it's a continuum, it's really allowed students to say like, okay, from right now, maybe am I writing number two? But I really strive to be at a three and these are the things I'm going to do. So instead of growth being just kind of this arbitrary term that's out in the sky, like it's really tangible for our kids. Um, so lots of teachers have been using the rubrics for student conferences for the monthly conferences. It's just, okay, kids, like this is, this is what you did, this worked really well. What are some areas you want to continue to work on? What do we want to strive for? So they're a part of that process. Instead of it's just happening to them, they're with us and doing it.
You just said monthly conferences.
Some teachers do monthly conferences.
Not, not, not with parents, sorry.
Oh, okay. Just with, with students, just checking in, how are we feeling? Based on their goal setting.
Not with parents.
It makes, it makes it more of a journey for them and not just an event.
Right, okay.
Teachers checking in.
So then, if teachers are doing this on a monthly basis, is that part of like, teaching the student how to become responsible for their learning?
Okay, yeah, basically we're getting buy-in, we're trying to get some ownership. So if you started like in September, if you set a goal, so then there's such, it could be a two minute check in. And where are you at on that goal? And so we're just, kids are coming alongside us instead of this being a thing to you. And we, you know, for instance, we want you to do, we want you to be at a four in writing. And this, these are the things that you're going to do. And maybe the conversation around goal setting is, I really want to do graded and expository writing. I really want to do graded and narrative writing. And these are the areas I want to work on. So then the teachers tailor them to, okay, we're gonna have to build some of their background because this is where they're starting. This is where we want to go so we can support them in their efforts to, to achieve this goal. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. At the high school level in math, I see all the various pacing guidelines for foundation geometry, honors geometry, algebra, and algebra one. Are, are both high schools paralleling each other?
We're working on it.
Okay.
Yes, so I, um, started when I, when I started with collaboration, I really focused on elementary because I felt like I, we really needed to get that foundation set. Um, and then I've, I, um, prior to COVID, I had met with, um, all of our content, uh, teams a couple of times. And we did get that last quarter, um, last year, uh, to meet. So not everything got finalized, but that was the conversation and that's the direction that we're going. So we, I actually have some great, uh, content teams this summer who are working together. Timberlake and Lakeland High School teachers to, to look at, um, the instructional calendars and materials. They're using lessons that they're creating in some of the assessments to dial that in and make sure that we're kind of on the same page.
Okay.
So, um, they're similar, they just, um, aren't a lot quite uniformed yet.
And again, I've expressed, I firmly believe that every teacher should have the ability to teach their style and have their resources to teach how they want to teach their students.
Right.
Um, but I do think there needs to be some, um, universal, universe, make it universal to where, you know, we're all running the same marathon together and, and achieving the same goals. Um, you don't necessarily have to teach it the exact same way, right?
Well, the beauty of that is that it's not just me as the teacher that I have to be the one doing all the work or making all the decisions. I have plenty of other people or eight other people. I have this team of people that, I mean, I don't have to be the expert at everything. I have other people. So the more uniform we can be and even sharing of the how, it just strengthens our skill set. Because, you know, like there's part of things that I do really well, but I'm not necessarily going to be great at this every single time. Within that moment where I've had a life event that I've just not filled in it that day, that type of thing. Like the more that we have, you have your team around you and you can't have those conversations if everyone's all over the place. And so we have really tried to push to, yes, you, you know, have the how, you can have some autonomy with, but even really controlling some of the how because it's important that we can calibrate and have conversations. So if, you know, we're not somewhere in the same square.
Right.
Um, that's problematic.
Right.
So I would tell you that the high school E, ELA department is, um, I feel like they really kind of dialed in in the first quarter. These are the standards we're going to teach, um, at, in the, uh, US history realm because of the change in the standards and the change that, um, uh, that I'll talk to the board about, um, about, um, moving world history to the ju, the middle level. And then three semesters of US history at the high school level because we were feeling like we were graduating kids who just did not have a very strong understanding of our history, the country. Because it was fifth grade and then eighth grade and then eleventh grade. And the, every time they had to start at the same place because kids didn't remember anything they'd learned three years prior. And they couldn't get very, as far as they wanted. So this year, um, they were teaching the eleventh, the, the full year. And then next year, they, those juniors, this year's juniors will take a third semester of US history as a senior. And, um, because it's new, they, and they're not ending their junior year writing exactly the same specs. They're, they're pretty close. And so that's the work this summer is to kind of dial that in.
Okay.
Um, so it's definitely a goal that we're working for.
So like the dual credit classes, I know that those teachers have to submit their curriculum and everything to the college to get that. Do they submit it to the district as well?
Now we have, it's truly a college class that we're giving the high school credit for, but it is. And they don't even, they're not creating that syllabus. That's, it's an NIC syllabus that they're teaching. Or an INU. And then use a little bit more flexible than NIC. NIC truly is, here's, here's the English one oh two syllabus that we're using on campus. This is the one that you're using in your classroom. So much so that when NIC had in-person learning this year, masks were required. And we were told that any child taking an NIC dual credit class on our campus had to follow the NIC mask policy. So it's truly a college class being offered on our campus.
Yeah, then you could go from Timberlake High School, only like in that class, everybody.
And NIC takes the textbook. Um, and INU actually will allow our teachers to use our district adopted textbook. But we have, they have to hit their standards with it, so. NIC doesn't allow that.
For the, uh, data collection graphs, just curious, um, okay, memories. Who's, what's the intention as far as maintenance? Is that something you're in charge of? Is it something every teacher's in charge of?
So let me give you the historical perspective. And I am gonna say Kathy and I a lot because for us, just, we just really felt like when we were talking about calibration and being able to have those conversations, we felt like, um, we needed some type of data measure. Um, you know, people were collecting data on a variety of things and we didn't feel like we could, like, our, our kids know the standard. If they don't, where are they? And then how, we really wanted reteaching opportunities to be built in for those maintenance standards. So the first quarter, we taught these things and we had ten kids that didn't get any of these two standards. Like where are we with intentionality? And we teach it in second quarter, assess it. And if they didn't get it then, in third quarter, especially because it's an essential standard. So we felt like, um, we all have some type of, we call them data days. Um, at the secondary level, they, it's a little bit different, but where we just kind of come together. Um, I can speak to Betty Kiefer, we have them five times a year. So we do one at the very beginning, it's local, all ISAT data, ISIP data from the previous year. So if you're a fourth grade teacher, you get to see third grade kids coming in, their strengths and weaknesses. And then you get to see your fourth grade from the previous year. And that's when we're really looking at, um, curriculum holes, like, okay, across the board, we really struggle maybe with, um, figurative language. So then what are we gonna do when we use that? Do we have the right materials? Uh, how do we teach that? So we're really just looking holistically at our instruction, not really about kids, but just instructionally, what can we do? We also then want the, the prior grade to see like, hey, you have third graders coming in across the board. They struggle in geometry. So fourth grade, you're gonna need to be more intentional, you're gonna need to more provide more opportunity. So we kind of look at that. So we wanted graphs that allowed us to be able to make those kind of decisions. But then as an elementary team, we could come back and really start having conversations about, okay, Kathy's building in Apple. Like they did a really good job and you got geometry, how did you teach that? Because back to, the teachers have this collaborative piece, but the principals don't. So when we're reading some of those conversations, maybe I'm not the expert in math or I'm not the expert in reading. But how do I, we're supposed to be instructional leaders in our building. So how do I do have those conversations with my teachers? If, if I'm the lone ranger having to, to know everything and be the expert in everything. So the only way we could do that was really to have the data graphs. So that then the elementary team could come back and start having conversations about, okay, work. And not in a pitted against each other type of way, but really just a sharing of ideas of how did your teachers teach this? What materials have you supplemented with something, what worked, what didn't work? Um, we started this a couple of years ago this year and COVID happened. And then this year, people have kind of, like, they end up tweaking it out a little, a little bit more. So we all across the board have the same data graphs. This next year, what we decided to do was, um, just have all six elementaries really look at it. If, if, let's say, for instance, if Anna wants to be able to chart her ISIP scores monthly, like I don't necessarily want to see that because ISIP has a graph, maybe she does. So we're gonna incorporate it in so that we're literally all six using the exact same name. And then we built into, uh, cause I'm the, um, I make a protocol for everything. So I can put it right in the vault with the same way and then don't be, like, we won't forget. Um, and so then just a monthly check so that we do have that collaborative kind of PLC for the, for the principals as well. Since we're supposed to be the instructional leader. And if there's an area that like, okay, Betty Kiefer is really struggling at third grade with this, what are some things that you guys are doing? But you can't have those conversations if there's some data around it. Because you can say, oh, this is great and I love it.
Right.
But what's the evidence that it's working? And so this was our way to have, so we need a formative and have that same level of calibration that we're wanting teachers to have at the principal level.
Okay.
So definitely, her question was who fills out the graph? Um, it happens that the teachers are filling it out, um, and so, sorry, in some buildings, it's like, in my building, um, teachers fill out part of it and the PDA and myself fill out some of it. So every building does it a little bit different. Um, in my building, uh, we really use it as kind of their grading tool. So that it's not just for me, it's really how they're keeping track of their rates as well.
Okay.
Um, because again, those are essential standards. So we're not just putting every single standard because that would be long. It is the ones that we are saying, this is what we're expecting mastery on. Um, and then with intentionality, with reteaching opportunities.
Okay.
Sorry, that was long enough to not answer that question.
No, I appreciated all the information I seriously did because it's, it gives a better perspective of, of what we're doing. Where we're going now.
Sometimes the why is really, really important.
Oh, yes.
And it's ever evolving.
We do, right, yeah. That's why we have the board's word.
We can't answer the why and it's sometimes hard to justify it to.
Well, I think as teachers and as educators, we're always trying to. When I think as teachers and as educators, we're always trying to help and refine our practice. And so if there are things, like I say this to the Betty Kiefer staff all the time, and I know a lot of parents will say the same thing, like, I want, I want every single classroom to be the kids that any three of my boys, I would be happy to have them in that room. And that's what all parents want. So we're not really, you know, looking at data, looking at evidence, looking at what we're doing all the time and analyzing that and fixing and tweaking, changing it, then it becomes stagnant. And then we're not maximizing and kids are changing every single year, you know, their skill sets changing. And so it's all, we're always trying to adapt and adjust and be right by kids because ultimately that's what we're all here for. I mean, I, I want whatever your parent wants, you know, my boys are in this district and, you know, we all want that. So I feel like that's what we're promising the parents. So we have to put systems and processes in place and show that that's happening.
And I appreciate that. I really do because, yeah, if you can't, if the sole follow through is just the kid passing through grade three, then we're not really comfortable with anything, right?
You guys are in the same boat.
Oh, we're very much in the same boat, yeah.
She looks like every single senior me like I.
Oh, you guys.
In all moments.
But we seem.
I got the teacher. Little Katie Marion was a part of that group and was like nine of them. And I got to teach advanced math in fifth and sixth grade with this.
You were around? Oh, yeah, without a doubt. Absolutely.
That's cool.
They're really great to give us. It's fun to see how that works. Here the way they look at things. Well, it's really awesome. There's really only one boy, like my title address for girls in front of Max and Tony was awesome. I mean, not, I'm not saying that obviously.
I mean, because you already recorded.
But it was really awesome.
Okay, so assessment cheat sheet. Basically everything linked in on the cheat sheet for all things learning, teaching and learning.
So the why of that is just, again, we really tried to look at this always through the lens of what's going to help the teacher, but then you're a first year teacher and I'm walking in the second grade and I don't really know. And so I actually made that original cheat sheet for the principals, just again, with the idea that we can't come together and have conversations around instruction or around this. Assessments are, you're always looking at the alignment of the standards and the rigor and the coherence of the standards. So how it looks like in that isolation, second grade, but then how that trajectory of what, what does that same standard look like in third grade, fourth grade and fifth grade? So we're always looking at that. So I made it as a cheat sheet so that we could start having conversation. And then I think with Tiffany actually that shared it with somebody and I'm like, oh, this would be super nice. And so I said, well, I can make that first, you know, the, the teachers as well. With the idea that, you know, then they have, there's one, when it comes to report card time, because that's a super stressful time for teachers. There's a one stop shop of where you're finding, you don't have to sift through your whole pacing guide. So it's just any way we can make their lives easier, we're always trying. And again, I'm the template person, so.
It's fun to see, it's fun to see how Lynn's brain works when we start talking about processes or systems. She, she just can see it right away.
That's really cool.
I know.
That's really cool.
High executive function.
She is a brave member of our team.
For sure. Yeah, there it is. Significant.
Imagine trying to sit through this and drive. Which is how it works originally. Or you go looking for somebody that was in drag, somebody accidentally deleted it. It was a nightmare. So this is more protective.
I thought you said and drive, like you were looking at this while you were driving.
I know. And I did not say. I was like, please.
One of those people where you got your, your, uh, novel, your steering wheel as you're driving down the road, trying to read. Oh, yeah.
In Seattle especially.
Seriously?
Yeah, we had like, oh, yeah.
Stop and go and they have amazing.
I'm actually, yeah. I'm trying to, I'm also driving my dad because he's putting this permit on my space. No, it's just more of that, no, but. No, you all should be wearing my younger skis on. Really follow that three car distance. He's going to be wearing your energy.
So with respect to your, the comprehensive curriculum cycle, like post possibilities. I guess what will be helpful for the board today is seeing how they're laid out on here. When were they actually adopted? Prior. Like, so we're doing K twelve math. So what is, for, it says K to, K to twelve math for twenty twenty one.
Really?
I mean, K, yeah, just doing K. Okay.
The high school math right now are, are okay with their big ideas.
Okay.
Textbooks.
So then the textbooks, the big ideas, when was that adopted into our curriculum? Because it's great to see this sequence of how we're, we're rolling in, changing and evolving and whatnot. But it's beneficial to know, when did we actually adopt?
How far?
Yeah.
I will see.
Do you get what I'm asking?
Oh, yeah.
Exactly. I just am not quite sure where I'm going to look to find information that you want, but I will.
Okay. Yeah. It has to be in the minutes for the board. It has to be like, Chris, you could find that in the minutes. It has to be there.
Chris is like, yeah, no. No, Chris cannot find that. Oh, well, we can archive somewhere. It goes back until like.
Or the past two thousand and asking track or.
I know when math and E L A were adopted, but beyond that, I cannot remember the year. So I have to, I have to just.
Yeah, and we should have this information so that we can.
It should be in board minutes.
Because, but, I mean, we should have it in a readily available location in case a patron commits it.
Moving forward. In a readily available place.
Perfect.
That's great. Oh, and then I, one thing I did forget too much of it. When we did policy last week, we were looking at the curriculum policies, there actually is language, statutory language, I think it was, that said that because the state adoption cycle is no longer what it used to be, that the district is required to submit annually our, any new newly adopted textbooks. Yes, that they have record of that. So moving forward, we will be doing that as well.
So we, do we need to do a retro list of everything that we had up to that point?
Cause everything that we adopted was on, it was on the state list. And now they're giving more little control to boards to be able to adopt. They're just not going through the same process that they used to.
I'm okay with you too.
Yeah. So if, if the board proves all of those, I could go through the process. I need to submit that to the state.
Yeah.
We have control for nerds. Any of these questions? Well, we used to, we, I don't know, we used to have art textbooks at the elementary level.
Okay.
They didn't really get used because we just, we didn't have the kind of art specialty.
Okay.
But we had music textbooks.
Okay.
And that's probably the extent of the fine arts at the elementary level.
Okay.
We didn't have any.
Okay. Well, because I know like they do, um, winter programs and spring programs.
And so I would guess moving forward, like as far as textbooks go, it's really just art that you would, maybe adopted at an elementary level, but as far as supplemental materials, if we had like, the entire district has access to the Lewis and Clark musical for the fourth grade.
Okay.
Moving forward, if that would be something I would bring to the board as a supplemental resource.
Right.
That would kind of fit into that fine arts, I guess, because it's music and drama. But it wouldn't be a textbook. So I would be bringing it up. Okay. We are supporting elementary.
Okay, so on this cycle, phase two is when the adoption is.
That's the year.
Phase three is the full implementation. And phase four would be a form of tweaking, so to speak.
Just evaluating and base, it probably should have if we were on a six-year option, it really should be phase four would be years four, five and six.
And if there's a revision there, if you see that differently, I mean, this was kind of our first question, like just methodically thinking through what that could be. So if you have more input, absolutely let us know. This was kind of our first blush.
Yeah, no, not a problem. It's, it's nice to see something like this so that we kind of have a plan of what we're doing, how we're doing it, where we're going.
Forward.
Yeah, forwards again. Yeah, definitely.
Well, just the scope of that process. So not losing sight of when are we having this conversation and then when are we, you know, in each of those phases.
Can I just ask, as board members, kind of where you are as far as that six year, like would you, would you hope that we would go down that road or each year we're looking at a new textbook and we're adopting more? Where, I guess, what, what is the board's question there?
Well, as a board member.
I know you, I, thank you. It is three of you here, so.
Yeah, no, I, I personally think we should annually be reviewing what needs to be addressed. I don't think it should just be left until, where are we, ten, twenty? Say twenty. I don't know how long it's been since some of our curriculum's been adopted. And I, if we don't, if, if we don't know it, that's very scary, which tells me that we're using some pretty old material. And I know that, you know, things are always improving and being made to achieve certain goals that weren't necessarily there ten years ago. So I, I think we do need to implement something that just shows a consistent acknowledgement of what we have. A consistent acknowledgement of, you know, we, we need, we need to improve this. So, yeah, if, if six years is the standard norm and been what it's been in the past, and yes, by all means, let's adopt something that or create something that helps us stay on task with that.
Yes, I agree. That would be very helpful.
Thanks, Debbie. So then we just have to think.
Yeah, so we need to, it doesn't, I don't think it needs to be an automatic because people, some districts spend a lot of money on curriculum and they haven't really, we talk to the teachers, they haven't really updated much. And so if they're on just a six-year, I think the board needs to really, would want to get teacher input ahead of time. Say, okay, this is up, up this year. Do you feel like we need it? What's working and not working in your current? So the board makes the decision based on you need to invest that tax pay dollars or not. Cause I don't think it needs to be an automatic for sure.
And that's, that's kind of in the past practice, which is why when we got the social studies the last time, when that survey went out and the, the team across the district really felt like, and taking into account, I guess, where we were financially also, because we, we, that was right before about the fire came. Right. And they felt like, no, we, what we have is working right now. But since then, social studies standards have definitely changed. So if I ask that question now, I guarantee you that our teachers would say, no, we really update this. So. So I do think it, but, and that can just be part of our process.
Fill that in.
Yeah.
So I also think there's a future learning curve whenever you're doing the adoption from the teacher standpoint, like you kind of feel from a teacher, and this is how I have felt, if you kind of get in your groove, like you're five and six, and then switching. So if there isn't a significant change or then, you know, we're, we're making wise decisions because sometimes you know, you can't even get into your momentum because we're changing it up again.
Right.
Yeah.
But if we're to be reviewing policy annually, I mean, that's a lot of policy. I, I think we would be remiss to not even take a cursory glance at what we're teaching these children. So just, we have this process and even if we're not changing anything, we still need to do the due diligence of looking at it, saying, is it going to still meet the needs? And do we need to put this, you know, next year, come back revisit to make change? So.
Well, I would even suggest that the rubric that we use kind of that that's determined and we come back and revisit that. See, does it still at this time, like it did two years ago or five years ago, would we still market the same way? So that it's an objective process that we go through of that, okay, or, you know, we're making that decision.
Right.
Whatever tool we use.
Right. Not that just that we didn't want to, so we didn't.
Right.
And then we did review it, even though we didn't choose to implement it. We at least reviewed it and chose to.
And you brought up just being the patrons. Like this would be a great annual thing at the end of the school year, maybe right after school's out. Where you, the board invites, like, we're going to put this out every single year. The board does their review, does a workshop and the patrons can make, what if there's new.
I was thinking that same thing when we were walking through, thinking how many people that have strong opinions of curriculum. Well, see, back when we kiddos were here, I did do this.
Oh, you did?
Oh, yeah. It was displayed. I mean, yes, it was laid out.
Yeah.
That's why it's like, where is it?
I'm not asking to know where did they do it at.
Here.
Must have been an annual.
It was. Because it is an annual thing. So, yeah, no, I, cause I remember going through just checking them out, saying, oh, my kid learned this.
So we're speaking the same language. I didn't know that you did that before. So now you, I see, I feel like this would be really good. And you've already been through it. So that's good.
Oh, no.
Yeah. And then she brought up the patrons isn't just parents, which I thought was important earlier.
Yeah.
I think we should put this on annual. It's a board's decision, but I feel like we should put it in annually. I think it's a great idea for June and after school's out.
That's the first one that brought up, even happen like that committee. And so that's part of the process. Right. The other thing that I think would be important is like, for example, the students with disability. It's important to know the why and what, like, some of these programs, they're, they're, they're specific to any lane and they would cross over to another lane, right? Being able to, if that committee were building their capacity adjustably so that when people, parents are coming through, we leave this annually, there is some context in the why, I think is important too, because this isn't, you know, like for yours to, they probably would never see the math, but somebody else would. And so they understand some of those pieces, but that committee could be a part of that process.
Definitely, definitely. Not, we don't have to do this now, kind of aligns with what we're saying, something I want to make sure that we get feedback on.
Because this is something that I was in charge of and of a prior district when I was the assistant soup. And so we kind of based it off of just my experience and pros and cons of like this went well or this didn't go well. Because this is a huge undertaking to do this math curriculum. So one thing that I really want to make sure and get board input tonight, and then if trustee Grissom or Irons have other additional input on the timeline. I really feel like it's important for the board to give feedback. To Dr. Pasley and Ms. Sexton about is to make sure it meets what you're looking for. Because now they're doing the instructional review piece now, and they've given you the timeline. They start contacting publishers, which Dr. Pasley has already started to do. And over the summer, they have, well, yeah, you.
I know, I'm like, I'm a little bit of a.
She has high executive functioning skills, so she just likes to get out ahead of it, I I want to make sure that this is what the board wants, because she doesn't want to. Start going down the path and then say, oh, this wasn't what we wanted. So you certainly can come back with us on it once you reflect and look at it, but just knowing that we do want feedback. In August, looking at, and she's gonna get the application process sent out, so that parents, patrons, like that, I truly believe. That should go to your point, I believe that needs to go into the paper as a press release. For patrons being able to, we'll send out Skylar, put it on Facebook, we'll do an Instagram post, we'll have everybody send it out to their parents, but it needs to go to the whole community. And so like the chambers, both the chambers and other people have voice that they can also send that out. But just be able to get an application process, because there will be more people that want to participate than are able to. So that piece, and then getting the committee together, and they will go through, and we talked, she certainly can share this, I just didn't think for this board meeting. But talking about how that process will grow out every month of reviewing the data and looking at that throughout the entire year. So that if you, if they take it to you in the very first part of March, and board members have participated, patrons, parents, they're coming to be able to do a monthly update to you. That this committee is able to give a monthly update to the board, that the board would feel confident in the information that they've had a year, every month. To ask questions, so that when they come with the recommendation, they'll do a formal presentation in the first meeting in March. That will give you two weeks, if there's additional questions, we want this information, in my experience, the board will say, okay, we want this, this, and this, not just this board, but all boards, when they're doing this large of an adoption. And then. Knowing that for us to order a district K through eight adopt, that is gonna have to be ordered in April to be able to. Received by June thirty, like we have to be able to receive it by June thirty, so.
And we'd like to send the teachers, emissions home of the teachers for the summer, so.
So with respect to you contacting publishers, which sounds like you have already begun that process, which is great. How many publishers are you reaching out to?
At this point, I just reached out to three, so I went on every course, which kind of is a math assessment kind of. Betting tool that they kind of look at all kinds of different programs and they rank them, and it is an objective process, they have their own betting tool that they use. And so just looking at what are the top ones, and, you know, some of the programs that they rank, it's Utah mathematics, although they're not necessarily behind the same standards as us. So then I just started pulling like kind of the top four. And we can look at as many as we want, but I just kind of started, I ready is is, I think, the number one ranked, and I it changes, so I keep just pulling it up. Eureka Math or the Old School Engage is up there, and again, I'm just looking at the ones that are all ranked very, really high. Illustrated Math, there are like six different versions of Illustrated Math, because they have different publishing companies, so that's one of them. So those are the three I've kind of contacted, there's a couple of others that we definitely could look at, I just feel like I would start bringing some of that information. What's nice about, or I guess what's unique about this year is obviously typically in a typical adoption. We would have all, whoever participated in the adoption process would be, they would say, I'm gonna do this, I'm a pilot program, I'm a pilot this, I'm gonna pilot this. Well, this year, because Go Math is, we're not using, we're not really using that, and it's not really aligned, everybody wants to participate in some form of the adoption, because we need math tools. So what's nice about those three are Eureka, we have access to it, we have access to I N this year, and hopefully have access to I Ready. So then we just look at if we want to look at a couple more, we can.
She put Discovery Ed in the middle.
So Discovery Ed is that we don't have, they don't have a, it would have been nice to have it, they don't have a K five version for Discovery Ed, so. We're really trying to not arbitrarily, I mean, we're really intentional about what we're choosing, so that we don't get a situation where it's misaligned, and if that's not working. Because pretty quickly into Go Math, people felt like. So so we we were starting to have this supplement pretty heavily, so we're really just hoping that our vetting process is really thorough and comprehensive, so that we're not in a boat.
So at the middle level, six through eight, looking at every course and the same document that Dr. Pasley looked at for K five. The number one program is called Mid School Math, and it is only a middle level math program, and it's designed with a middle level child in mind. And so we're, they want to look at that one. Discovery Ed Math is a six through twelve. They call it tech book because it's online. Several of the teachers that, we did a little, we did a demos, like demo, month month demo kind of site license for some of the teachers, so they go and kind of play around with it, and they love what they saw, so. There's some who want to pilot that, and then I Ready Math for middle level is actually ranked. Lower than I think it is making comfortable, but because it's so high for the K five. And so many of the teachers of that level loved the diagnostic part, they felt like they needed to at least take a look at I Ready. To for there to be a chance that maybe we do a full K eight adoption using the same. We typically, in in, well, since I've been in this district, I don't think we've ever had a K eight math adoption with the same tool. Because there are just some that are designed in really strong for elementary, and then some that are designed in really strong for the upper levels. So I I have reached out and have just asked the question about pilots.
Okay.
Just because we've been looking at what they might be interested in. But the very first thing that I alluded to before, based on our policy that we have to do, is get permission from the board to create the adoption committee.
Right.
So that would be the first thing we do.
Okay. And then respecting that it said K to twelve, you're telling me it's K to eight, I would like to know. When the when the big ideas math was adopted.
It was the year before I got.
And what year did you start?
Sixteen.
So twenty fifteen, sixteen was the first year we used to have ideas. It was the, it was the most recent adoption.
Okay.
But it. Since the six year, when we adopted it, we did a six year print cycle and a six year digital. So the digital is gone, and so is the print cycle, so we need like consumable workbooks, we don't get those anymore. The high school teachers have asked us to look at providing or paying for a digital license, because several of them used that. If they're gonna participate in that adoption, they would like access to that tool, so I did reach out to Houghton Mifflin. However, Houghton Mifflin is no longer publishing Big Ideas, and I guess Big Ideas is its own publisher now, so I just have to figure out who our records and go through them, but that was the request on that.
Okay. I don't see anything wrong with the timeline, it seems that there's adequate. Adequate prep for the board to be prepared.
It'd be really nice to have. Two of you at least on the team, and more than two wanted to participate, we just would have to post. That number would be a forum each time we met, but two would be.
You would still have to be posted with board members on the committee.
So anyway, it would be nice to have at least two of them.
We're really trying to make this as objective as possible, you know, make sure our line is solid.
Right. So you're looking at coming in the August for the. But when are we? I'm here.
Yeah, I think we need to add to Ms. Sexton's point, we need to add June twenty fourth, we need to add the approval.
But that would be when I would ask to have an action right on my agenda for, okay, from the board.
Okay.
And I I think to get to the board's input, but I believe this August to announce. My recommendation would be that we start that process earlier, because to give people, you want to start the ground running in September. I feel like to get the board's approval in June, I think you should announce it to the public in July, and then start. You have to give people like a month tip for applications, because they're all over the board, and I'd like to publish it in a paper.
Then we can have the team ready to go in August.
Yeah, that would be my, something you're not gonna like, is I do think there should be a mailing. Because.
No, I'm good with that.
Are you okay?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think this isn't, we haven't done this since I've been here, like, I feel like that's to to trustee Bane's point earlier, I feel like we need to, the patrons need to know. That they have input into this, and if we're reaching out to ask for their input, so I believe that's a really good idea. No, I think it's great.
Okay.
And potentially this is going to be a large ticket for them and raising taxpayer dollars, so they need to have some input.
Yes, and I mean, with the mailing, I would just include the application if you have that, and it's ready to go already.
A hard copy, a hard copy.
Because if you give them all the tools, they can't come back and say, well, you just let me know, and then I had, and I couldn't find it.
I think it's perfect.
So we're gonna mail, it's gonna house the same amount, anything except for, so we're just giving them all the tools, and they don't want to participate, we're giving them a manual now.
I think that's a great idea. She already has, we have the application ready.
And it's on it.
I just happen to see like something through its whole progression and then scaffold back, this is how my brain works, so I have to put it on paper, and then I can make adjustments, but.
I would like to, I'd like to start with June twenty fourth, the board approval for the committee. I'd like to revamp this, because trustee Irons and trustee Grissom will be here, everyone has a chance to look through this and give you guys feedback.
Are you guys comfortable if we make those adjustments and then bring it back to you with the June twenty fourth date and then the the July?
Yes.
And then that way you can.
Debbie, are you okay with those?
Yes, that's fine.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. She wanted to get your feedback on the application, I said, let's hold off, this is a lot for them to do in one night, let's give, wait for the application till the next, so this would be perfect to do that on June.
We were really trying not to just talk at you when we were doing the presentation, I mean, like, of what we thought might be helpful to you, so.
Thank you, that's appreciated, that really is. You've given us an abundant amount of information, thank you, I do appreciate it. Wade through it, and then. Fourth meeting Thursday, and then the twenty fourth, okay.
Yep.
Got it, okay. Just trying to think when I'll see you again.
And all the graduations this week too, that you were speaking.
Yes.
I have them sent in to you.
Yes, Wednesday and Friday, I saw that, I'm like, ooh, I have something to say.
We get to spend four nights together this week.
How lucky are you? I'll probably see both of you at Timberlake, so. You're not, are you, are you parenting or?
Are you gonna stand on the stage and give your.
Yes, we will go ahead and.